Welcome, everybody. I'd like to open up the work session for Lawrenceburg City Council for May the 27th, 2025 with roll call Ms. Webster.
Member Lenny Fryman.
Present.
Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, ma'am.
Member Thomas Rowlett, Sr.
President.
City Attorney Del Walden.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay. The only item on the agenda today is to talk about the Riverfront Project with the LCD. Mr. Mondell, you want to lead us off?
Go ahead. I'm the guy. Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to come and make a, I think, a fairly brief presentation on what the status is of our Riverfront Development Review. And...
Well, let me ask you a question first, okay?
Yeah.
Has it changed since the last time?
Since what last time?
When we met the last time?
Number one is the gangplank. Have you guys agreed with that yet or not? Because that's pretty much what this is going to be about.
We will address that, clarification of what's happening. We haven't received anything in...
I believe the last time we met here, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
We had just received their submittal, and so we were reviewing that.
Right.
So I guess it has changed slightly.
Was that in January or February?
Issued our comments on that since the last time we met.
It'll clarify. We'll clarify exactly where we are. I mean, we got a timeline here. One thing we want to talk about is, we want to go through a little bit of the permit process, just to refresh everybody's memory about what that is, what we've been doing. And then we'll review that timeline very quickly.
Okay.
To let you know, okay, how did things get to be where they are? And then we'll eventually get, we'll give a couple of examples of our review, but we'll certainly talk about the last remaining issue that we believe is important, which is the gangway. So...
Let me ask you a question, then. You just made the comment. Is that the last remaining issue?
We have not received, we'll get to, you'll see what it is, but there, we have a series of comments that have been put out to the engineers, and we have not received response.
No, what I'm asking, is that the last remaining on this project? Is that the last remaining issue that needs to be addressed?
Well, every comment needs to be addressed, Mayor.
On the gangplank?
Yeah, so, and we have a slide, like John mentioned. There's 38, what we call straightforward comments, and those are things such as omissions, or errors, or just discrepancies between all plans. So there were 38 comments. Twenty-five of those are resolved, complete, done.
Okay.
Eight more of those are in the last submittal. They were, continued to be omissions, or what I'll call minor but important comments. So we issued eight more of those.
Regarding the whole project, or just the gangway?
This is all the project.
Okay, got it. That's what I was asking.
We issued eight of those on January 30th.
Okay.
And I believe they said they've addressed those, but we haven't received those yet to review them. And they're straightforward, so anyways, we haven't received those to take a look at the response there. So that's eight, and then the last five are related to the gangway. And the gangway is the big one, and that was a design change in January.
Right.
So there's that, just to get into the details a little bit ahead of time.
Okay, so the eight, the eight are small things, you're saying?
Yeah, important, what we call straightforward.
Sure.
We'll have an example of what that means, but yeah.
Yeah. They should be straightforward.
Right, right, right. Okay, thanks.
All right, great. So, let's talk about the permit process, just real quick to clarify, because I'm not sure we talked about the permitting process last time. And so, what, we're going through, the ultimate goal of this permit is to help clarify the purpose of, of why we're doing this. It's to protect the public, the public's health and welfare, right? And it's also to protect the infrastructure of the Core's levee from being impacted negatively by any kind of development. So that's the goal of why we're going through all of this, to protect the public. I mean, that's the thing we have to remember. And the process we have here is fairly straightforward, but it's to limit, it starts with a third-party reviewer, and we've been hired as that by the LCD. We reviewed this not only for, to make sure the levee still functions as it was originally intended, that all the technical analysis have been completed, that need to be completed according to Core guidance, and also to review the probable impacts of this development on the public interest. And, by the way, this is a, this is a fairly straightforward process in general, in that this requires review by a third-party, acceptance by the LCD, and then the Core, after we do this, has to give its official approval. The thing we have done in this process has been keeping the Core apprised as we've gone along. So we've had various discussions with the Core on, on several issues, and so it's not like they're getting at the end, and they're going, they shouldn't be surprised by what the issues are. And so, the other thing here is, down here at the bottom, is the design requirement. What, how is this thing, it should be this, how should this be designed? And this has been a little bone of contention at the beginning of this, because it wasn't clear that all the design has to be for the loading at the top of the levee, the flood event at the top of the levee. It was not clear when the design team took this on that they understood that this levee has to withstand that kind of loading.
What year is that event? If, for the, for people in the audience?
That, 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 that event is the 1937 flood event, the 500-plus-year flood event.
500 to 1,000.
Yeah, yeah. It's not the, the FEMA event that they're interested in is the 100-year, which is about 13 to 14 feet lower than the, than the flood of record. So the FEMA is a lot less loading that's going to happen on this levee. That's not what's going to be acceptable to the Core. This, this development has to withstand the, the, the top of levee loading.
What, what level are you approving it for, for FEMA? Is it for the 100-year, or are you approving it for the 500-year? Or what level are you approving it for?
When, when we eventually approve this levee, it's going to be both for FEMA, so, you know, that's a lower standard, the 100-year, but we'll also have to approve at some point the, the top of levee loading.
For credit, for, for certification purposes, you only have to satisfy FEMA, correct?
That's, that's going to be my, that's my question. If Greendale's levee is not near as high as ours, it's FEMA-approved.
I need an answer first.
It's FEMA-approved, then why can't we just get ours FEMA-approved?
What I'm asking is, is you guys are certifying or accrediting the levee?
Right.
For the FEMA requirement, correct?
Yeah.
Which is the 100-year requirement?
Yes.
Why are we being asked to do a project that is 500 to 1,000? If your levee's going to fail at the 100-year, it's going to fail way before that project.
Good, yeah, good question. Oh, yeah. Good question. So there's the FEMA accreditation, and that's for all, like, the flood insurance and things like that. And then there's Army Corps certification, and this is an Army Corps federal project. So when this was constructed in the 1940s, it was an act of Congress to construct this levee to this elevation. So there is the FEMA accreditation, but there's also keeping it in line with Army Corps the way that they built it. And that's an act of Congress, so anything to stay in the rehabilitation PL-8499 program for the Army Corps, it has to be designed to that top of levee loading for the Army Corps. So there's two things we're doing.
I'm talking about the...
Right. So the 408, the permit is for Army Corps infrastructure. So, and so we're talking about the levee. So the things that we're reviewing are things in that levee embankment zone. And so that's where the gangway, because it physically attaches the footings on, of the gangway, and we'll talk about that, physically attached to the levee. And so, since it's on the levee, it's an Army Corps infrastructure project that was built to this. So they, in terms of getting the permit for the 408, the, one of the things, one is protecting the public here in the city of Lawrenceburg, and two is to make sure that development doesn't negatively impact the infrastructure that is there that they built. So they built it to this standard, so that's, that's why we have to view it in terms of that standard.
I appreciate you answering that. I just want to make sure I understand it. So there's two approvals. There is FEMA, and then there's also the Army Corps, correct? Is that what you're saying?
There's the FEMA accreditation, which we're doing with the Lawrenceburg Conservancy District. So our review for the Riverfront Project is for the 408, which is Core-related. So that's why we have to look to the top of levee. And then we also don't, which is higher than the FEMA, right? So if it's good for that, it's going to, this project is going to be good for the FEMA, too.
Okay, what if we, what if we take the gangplank out of the project?
So, then there's, so there's, and we're kind of getting into some of the slides.
Finish up your presentation.
You want to ask, cancel this and just answer questions? We thought it'd be logical to go through this so you understood what we did.
Sorry, we're jumping ahead.
That's all right. I mean...
Can I get your name? I'm sorry.
Luke Johnstone, yeah.
Thank you.
What if the gangplank was not part of the project?
Right, so...
Would you have any issues with what's been presented thus far?
So, I think, besides the gangway, like we said, there's, there's 38 comments, 25 are resolved, eight are straightforward, and then there's five that are...
Forward have not been answered yet.
They said that they're, they've, we just haven't received them, but I'd expect, except for, you know, unless there's, I expect them to be able to be answered readily.
Okay, so my question is, as soon as you get the answers to those eight, and we eliminate the gangway from the project, are we good?
Well, tell us more about this gangway without the project, because we don't understand how...
Exactly, it's pretty plain.
So, so, yeah.
We just do away with the gangway.
We'll drive them down there.
So then...
We don't need the gangway.
Ate at the garage.
Okay, yeah. So then, we receive the responses, and if those eight responses are good, then we would issue our recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Then...
That's what I was looking for, and that's, that's what I would expect you to say.
Yeah, and then, just to clarify, too, we would issue our recommendation for approval, then the LCD recommends it for approval, and then the Core has to do a full review.
We're aware of the process.
Okay, great.
But my question was, is, let's, let's just eliminate the gangway. It's going to save us money, and it saves any more headache, except for the eight questions that you need answers to.
Well, disconnects that project from being on the levee, because we, that's exactly right. The gangway had, had an attachment to the levee, what we...
We're going to do away with it.
That's, that's an alternative. We gave several alternatives, and that would be one if you were...
Our alternative, I mean, but it's our, our decision would be maybe, and, you know, I can't speak for council, but they're, if they're looking to save money, and we can find an alternative that doesn't touch the levee, we're, you know, I think it's a good option just to do away with the gangway.
It would eliminate a lot of questions, yeah.
Mayor, are you speaking on the second gangway?
Second gangway.
Not the original? Okay, that's what I, clarification there.
Anyways, sorry, finish your presentation.
Well, no, I mean, I think we jumped, jumped ahead. This is just all to remember. How many times your levee failed? Several times, 1913, 1937, last 2018, it didn't fail. So we want to keep this going in this direction. We've got a good levee, we have to make sure anything that touches it still doesn't, doesn't cause failure. So, the only thing I just wanted to say, there was a little misconception about why this has taken so long, and why all the comments. I mean, the fact is, this is, with a gangway attached, this was a complicated project, because you had two sets of plans, you had the levee plans, you had the river plans, you have two sets of specifications, and you've got four engineering firms. And that all needed to be reviewed, and when you have that many moving parts, sometimes there's not consistencies between either plans or specifications. So a lot of the work we did is making sure that there weren't data gaps that were present in those plans and specifications, and that they were consistent. And they weren't several times. And so a lot of our, our comments were related to that. And then, really, I'm going to let Luke take this, because I do want to just run through quickly this timeline, because I think there was an impression that somehow there's been a, we've been a major holdup on this, and I, I think we have followed a clear process that, that allowed us to be fairly, fairly quick in our responses. I just want to make sure everyone understands that, so we don't have a misconception that somehow Mondell has been, been dragging on this. So Luke, if you can just kind of jump onto that.
And I'll try to keep this high level here, and just, yeah, to clarify, so the 30% plans were submitted in December of '23, right? And then, so Army Corps did review those 30% plans, and we wanted to wait, give them opportunity to respond, so we could incorporate their comments, too, in our, our review. So they reviewed in April of '24, we submitted our comments in May of '24. There was some back and forth in the summer months, and then in September was when we received the 100% plans. So we didn't receive the plan, the 100% plans until September, and then we issued our comments in September. And then, we had some clarifying comments, and it was, one thing, as John alluded to earlier, it wasn't clear if every part was designed to the top of levee loading. So it was confirmed in the response in November, that there were pieces of that, that weren't designed to the 100-year.
When was the first talk of designing to the top of the levee?
It was... I, I don't exactly recall the preliminary meetings and all of that.
November of '24, ring a bell?
It was unclear that they weren't designing it. It was unclear.
My question is, is what's industry standard?
Industry standard for designing on an Army Corps levee?
Yeah.
My understanding for Army Corps levees, it's whatever it was built to the top of levee loading.
Yeah.
For a 408 permitting process. So, all right, yeah, so anyways...
That wasn't discussed until September of 2024, and we've been working on this since 2021.
Yeah, sorry, it wasn't...
I believe the Core and us both assumed that they would know that they were working on a Core levee, and that would have been implicit. That's the bottom line. It wasn't, it was so obvious to us who worked with Core levees, that it wasn't a separate item. And when we only received 30% of the plans, they were fairly conceptual at the time. So I think that's...
They were conceptual, and we alluded to the fact even in May, that, hey, some of these things aren't to the top of levee, what's going on? Could you clarify? So it was alluded to that. What they understood in terms of working on Army Corps levee, I'm not, I can't speak to, and there were some meetings back in 2022, and I believe 2023. I have to go back to look at those meeting notes and whatnot.
How many phone calls did you guys all have between the two engineering, our, our side of engineers and your guys?
Phone calls, I'm not sure. There's been a lot of communications, and on one of these slides, and we have a printout of some of the back and forth going through, at least since, at least since, like, the spring of 2024. But there's been a decent amount of communication there, so, yeah.
We've got a fairly detailed outline of every kind of interaction we've had. We didn't, I don't think, but, well, we have that on there. Luke, you want to?
Yeah, and that's, anyways, I'll just finish this slide, and then we can, yeah. Anyway, so November confirmed that these pieces were to the 100-year, and, okay, need to be the top of levee loading. So at that time, we said, hey, and we confirmed with the Army Corps, and we're in line with the Army Corps, hey, these pieces are on the levee. Yes, it needs to be to the top of levee loading. So we said, hey, can you, this, these pieces need to be the, to the top of levee loading? Or if it can't for some reason, tell us, it's going to require more explanation, right? And, and then more, more thought, basically, if it can't meet that standard. Anyway, so it was redesigned in this January, we issued our comments in January, and then the gangway comments in February.
There's, there's almost 500 emails that came through me. So there's been a lot of communication.
That's why, I mean, I don't understand why people, people weren't on the same page with understanding where they're designing this to.
So, and to what John alluded to earlier, this is, there's multiple firms, there's the Core, there's us, so, like John said, it's not, it's not like we've had the plans in our lap for a year. There's been back and forth, and on average, you know, 65 days in structure point, often Nichols Court, 45 days per review, 42 days, and then Army Corps had that 30% review, which 113 days. So, in a sense, it's good that it's not just Army Corps reviewing these, because each one of these iterations would have, it would have been much longer. And then the total time since September 2024, again, it's not like the ball's been in our court for most of the time. Now, we haven't heard anything since February, so there's, some of that time is there, but...
We were told not to...
I'm not sure who, who told you that.
We were told, we, we were given a letter that says you are not going to be paid, and that you are not advised to answer any more questions from our engineer.
Okay, well, we still haven't seen anything or heard anything, and even that, the majority of the time, that's only since September, the majority of the time has still not, it's not been in our court this whole time. Just to say. And again, we have this printout, and we have a copy for you if you want to see it. Here's the timeline of all the back and forth, detailed, I'm not going to go through it, just to say there's been a lot of back and forth. Again, here's another Gantt chart, you know, I'm not going to go through it all. It shows the timeline, just to say there's been back and forth. The blue bar on there, that shows, it's a timeline, right? So since December '23 to May 2025, it's not like it's one giant blue bar. There's an orange for structure point, often Nichols, there's Army Corps, the big red at the beginning. So there's been a lot of back and forth, and we didn't receive the 100% plans till about halfway in September. So, as you might imagine, there's a lot of detail missing on the 30% plans. Okay, so the status, and we've alluded to it again, the upshot is we haven't heard anything from February, since February, in that we're aligned with the Army Corps. Zooming in a little bit, like I mentioned, 38 comments, 25 of those are resolved, what we're calling straightforward, minor but important comments. Eight of those, we sent an email, they indicated they were done without, those eight, we haven't heard anything. And then the gangway design, we issued a comment letter on that in February, and haven't heard anything. And just to clarify, a pessimist understanding, Army Corps, they're not ready to approve as it stands today. I think, just to clarify, the gangway issues, we've met with them, and they have similar questions. We're on the same page on the gangway questions. So they want to see those questions answered, too. Once, and they have been tracking all these comment letters. So if, if slash when it gets to the point that we can approve, they've been tracking all these comments, so they don't anticipate having substantially more comments, because they, they know what comments are out there, what questions are left to, to be answered. Nevertheless, one, you know, it's not like we just hand it to them and they rubber stamp it, they still have 90 days, and they have to do a final review of everything. So just to clarify that. So, we're currently waiting, we haven't heard anything since February, and we're aligned with the Core. And I know, just to give brief examples, there's complex, this is a complex project, there's lots of moving pieces. Just, just show you how some of these comments, it just takes time, it can, it takes time. So we have two examples of these straightforward comments, just so you have an understanding of what that means. And then, we'll talk, we have two slides on the gangway. Right, so this is just one example of straightforward comments, right? We get the plans in September '23, Army Corps issues their response, they say, hey, the plans say backfill any excavation with gravel. Army Corps says, hey, you can't do that on a levee. Okay, so we get the 100% plans in September, that specification wasn't updated. So all we said was, hey, could you update that spec like Army Corps suggested, or like they commented on? And then in November, the spec was updated. So that's why, it's, it's important that it's updated, but it just takes time when you have a month or two months in between each comment letter. The other one, the other example, there's a lot on this slide, I'll just, I'll go through it kind of quickly and hit the high points. The upshot is, we received 30% plans, again, in December. You know, they're not complete, and that's fine. There's this gangway, the platform, they have the piles on the levee, and all we said, hey, you know, can't have penetrations more than three feet. What's the depth of these penetrations? Because there were only 30% plans. September '24, they showed the penetration depth, they're 30 to 40 feet. Trying to work with them, so we're like, okay, well, let's think, so we thought about it internally, and we were like, okay, you know, it's down at the toe of the levee, it is a gray area in, in some of the regulations, but, so we reached out to the Core, and we said, hey, these are our thoughts. What thoughts do you have? And they said, yeah, yeah, we agree with you. Why don't you try asking them to provide a narrative to answer these two questions? And it was in line with what we were thinking. So our comment letter, again, in line with Core, was, hey, can you provide a narrative letter to answer these two questions? Okay, so that's September. November, they provided the narrative letter. It was good to think, they changed the design, so that was, and it was for the benefit. We didn't say they had to, but, you know, and thinking about it a little more, they changed it, it was good. Their engineer provided a letter saying, you know, why it's going to be okay, it's not going to hurt the levee. It was all good. And then in their engineer letter, it said, we also recommend putting riprap around the piles. So we said, okay, so we turned to the plans, and the, the riprap's not on the piles. So all we said in our comment letter was, hey, everything's good. Your engineer said to put riprap on the piles, please update the plans to put riprap on the piles. Okay, so January, the plans come back, and there's a detail for riprap on the piles to protect from scour. Again, it was good, but it looks like the wrong specification for the riprap was in the plans. So again, all we said was, hey, it's good, could you please just call out the right specification? That's what we're talking about. When straightforward, minor but important comments, and, you know, what do you, at a certain point, like, their engineer said to put riprap, so we were saying, yes, you know, like your engineer said, put riprap, please. Those are the two kind of general examples of kind of the back and forth. And like I said, 25 of 38 of those are resolved, and there's still eight more of those outstanding. Now, and almost done, and then, you know, feel free to jump in with more questions or any way. The gangway, again, this is, just to give context, I know you all know it, what, you know, the low river stage, right, on the left, and then this is back in April, this is a 16, about a 16-year event, right? So the top of levee is about 22 and a half feet higher. So there's debris out there, but it's going to be 22 and a half feet higher, so there's going to be, it's going to be further submerged, there's going to be more debris. That's what we're dealing with, and why is this so important? Well, it's the connection on the levee itself that we're focused on, and it's the one point where we have the riverboat out in the river, and it's, you know, catching all the debris, and it's connected to the levee, right? So, just a timeline, we've been asking about it to, you know, again, it was the 30% plan, so we had some initial kind of questions, hey, you know, what's this, what's that, think about this? And then we were asking for further clarification in September, and then in November, you know, 100, 100-year, it was only designed for the 100-year. So we said, okay, well, again, in line with the Core, it's on the levee, it's physically attaching, so you have to design to the top of levee, or if you can't, it's going to require further explanation. So they chose option two, and we, we didn't say you had to do that, again, and they chose the design to break away. So now it's not a question of if it will fail, it's a question of when it will fail. So now it's not a question of if it will fail, it's a question of when it will fail and fall onto the levee. So now we have to think about what's going to happen when we have this 94,000 pound structure falling on the levee. Okay, so we thought about it, considered what they submitted, and this was in January, that they submitted this. And we talked with the Corps, hey, this is what we think, what do you think? Yeah, 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 we're on the same page. They said, hey, we, they need to provide a narrative to further build the case as to why this won't cause a levee failure when this structure falls and hits the levee. So, okay, so this is a design-to-fail approach, and so you're not designing to meet the, the Army Corps standard. So there's no rulebook guideline for how to do that. So we took, and we kind of went above and beyond in our gangway letter, it's 17 pages, and we really tried to provide a roadmap of what questions you need to include in this narrative that the Army Corps and us are, are asking for. And you need to answer questions like, why can't it meet the levee design standard? How is it going to be designed to fail? How do we know it's going to fail at the right time, so to speak? How is it going to impact the levee? Is it going to gouge the levee that could result in catastrophic levee failure? Describe that to us, how often will it fail? And one thing to keep in mind, when it does fail, there's going to be a financial matter of who's going to fix the levee when this, this fails. That's where we are currently, that, we sent out that letter in February, and there's still some initial, information was provided, but there are still omissions and things that need to be provided for that narrative. So we're almost done here, I'll just pass it to John to close out.
Yeah, I just, and, and we, we didn't make, want to make a big show, but this is, are some of the reports we've kind of reviewed, addressed related to the Lawrenceburg levee. They're not, most of them are not simple, this very, the levee itself is complex with all the relief wells, but now we have something attaching there. So, you know, it's still our, it's still our position that we're trying to protect the city. We're trying to do a very good job for you all, this isn't just for the LCD, it's for the city. And so I think we've, you know, the process, we followed the 408 process, we've been responsive in our timeline. We've had this gangway that was, you know, an issue, and if, you know, you're saying, well, maybe we don't need the gangway. Well, that's, that's, that's great, that's, that makes things easier, I bet, for sure. So, so we just wanted to just let you know that because of our role in this of certifying the levee, that, you know, professional engineers take an oath to make sure it's done correctly, no matter who's the client. I don't care if the LCD is the client or you're the client. We do this according to the, the rules and the guidelines of the Corps, and we call it as we see it. So, you know, I just wanted to demonstrate that we, we've done a lot of work, we've been responsive, we follow the process. The Corps is with us, and we probably saved the project time by doing these responses, because the Corps would have thrown it back and done the same thing, and probably taken a lot longer than we have. So that's, I think that's what we really wanted to point out, I don't know if the LCD has any other specific comment, but I think, you know, if we receive comments again, we're going to be right on it. As you've seen on a couple of things, developments we've had, we've turned things around within a few days even of some of these other projects. So this is a complex project with multiple engineering firms, and we can go forward from here, so.
Thank you, questions?
Hey, Kelly, can I?
Yeah.
I do want to address, when we said, we sent you the letter about, you know, the projects, I guess supposedly stopped when we sent you this letter. But what happened was, we tried to enter into an interlocal agreement with Dell, along with our attorney Jared, long time ago, year, year or so ago. Communication seemed to break down. So we expect to be reimbursed for our engineers, just like you guys are paying your engineers. So I talked our board into moving forward with this project without the interlocal agreement. I thought to myself, I know you guys, I know this community, we'll get reimbursed. We're doing this project, you guys are doing the project, we're trying to protect downtown. So we moved forward with 15,000, 25,000, 40,000, 70,000, we're paying all these bills. So it comes to the point, if we're going to continue with this project, we have to be reimbursed. So when we sent you that letter, I think, and Dell, you got it, I'm sure, Kelly's got it, we gave you how much money we've spent. If you weren't doing this project, we wouldn't be spending this money. If you weren't doing this project, we'd be moving forward with our certification of the levee.
So you're not moving forward with your certification of the levee?
Haven't you asked? We've, it's put us behind about a year, this, this timeframe has put us way behind. We were supposed to submit some six, seven months ago. So it's put us behind close to a year with this project.
A year when you've done it for 14.
Well, again, you can see, it's not as simple as, as you think, I'm sure. But you see right here, and we're dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers, and no matter how long it takes, we're trying to protect your community, our people.
I want to tell you something, Jimmy, you're right. But I think we all have a common thing we want to do here, and we all want to protect the community.
Yep.
Because we got millions and millions and millions of dollars stuck in this community.
Yep.
And we, the last thing we want is a failed levee, the last thing we want is our folks having to pay flood insurance.
We, I'm with you, so.
Don't say it's LCD protecting the community, it's us, we want to protect the community as well.
Right, that's why we want...
Why didn't we negotiate 10 years ago to, to make sure that you guys were able to have a budget? Why did we do that?
Well, your boat's built on our levee, your built, your boat's built on our property, do you realize that? I think you do.
And you had a, a develop, a...
Right, we renegotiated and got more money, we could renegotiate again, I guess, if we think we can...
We're not open to that.
What happened to us working together? This used to be...
We haven't stopped working together, we're working together right now, Tony, we're here right now, working.
Okay, but you say, you know, we're putting all this money out, but that's in your mission statement, to build parks and rec on the levee and stuff. You guys should be, we should be working together and helping each other out there.
I, I don't know if building on top of the levee is in our mission statement, I, I don't think, Tony.
Building parks and rec around the levees.
Well, that's not a park, I mean, what you're building is a multimillion dollar project, I'm assuming, I don't, I don't know what the number is, but we'll work with you, we're here today, we're, we're ready, ask us the questions, let's try to, so we...
I think we got our questions answered, I think they did a great job of explaining, but, and, and it's up to this, these five gentlemen to decide if we even going to go forward, because they got to decide if they want to figure out a, a pay, you know, an option for payment to, to do the project, but they also, if they, if they want to choose to get rid of the gang plank, I think it's, it, it solves a problem pretty quickly.
John, I do have some questions. In terms of how this is designed, where, where is that stated that it is to be to the top of the levee? The only reason why I ask is, we're getting conflicting information. We've been told that industry standard is to the 100-year flood, and then now you are saying that it is to the top of the levee. So where, where is that information stated that way? We can do our homework up here, right, and make sure that we're getting the correct information.
I think you can go right to the horse's mouth, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and they'll tell you their designs, requirements for their existing levees is to design, to, to build things and modify levees to the original design intent, which in this case is the top of the levee. So if it's a, if it's a federal levee, that's the standard. I think the misconception here is, there are a lot of things in, in engineering that are designed to the 100-year flood elevation. Lots and lots, in fact, more than just the Corps' unique position. So that's not wrong in the sense that the, the standard is 100, 100-year. Well, a lot of the standard is, but the Corps is a special case. And so if you, if you have any doubt, I mean, I could, we could probably go to the section and go, see, there it is, but if, if you go to the Corps directly, it's also there, but we, we'll be able to find it. Luke, you want to say anything else?
And I, I might add too, the 100-year, it is a kind of industry standard, but also it's, it's not, a lot of times when you're doing like FEMA, they say 100-year, you know, that's, or a city, maybe it's in there, city regulations, 100-year. In terms of kind of, it's, you don't, you always think about where, where you're designing and what you're impacting, right? So this is, it's 100-year for a non-critical piece of infrastructure, you might say. But if you're touching a critical piece of infrastructure that is protecting millions and millions of dollars, you know, you might think, too, it's not, it's not just the Army Corps, and it's not just the standard, but you also might consider, do we need to go a little bit more than just the 100-year if you're impacting a critical piece of infrastructure? So...
Is that written?
That's, that, the ASCE standard, which was cited there, and, and some of our regulations, it, they, it is implied, I would say, in, in Army, in standards, that it's, you think about it.
The word that I've seen in the regulations is significant. Is this a significant levee alteration improvement, or something considered not significant? I can't say that I've ever seen a good definition of what one is and one is not, I can't find that. That, that's been part of what we've been trying to work through throughout this process. Is a significant levee addition something that means we're actually adding to the levee, or is it adding something on the side? I don't know if we've ever really been able to suss that out in terms of their guidebook.
Yeah, and two, I might, I might say too, I forgot to mention this in one of the slides, we're not saying this can't be built. Right now, we're in the stage of this is a new design change, and we're saying, hey, we're requesting for more information. We're in the request for more information stage, and we're not saying this can't be done. And like the pile, the penetrations of the platform, the, the standard regulation, or the standard Army Corps MO is you can't excavate more than three feet. Well, those piles go 30, 40 feet, but it was a, a little bit of a gray area, so we thought more, asked them to provide a little more information. They did, and we're okay with that. So, we're not saying this can't be done, we're in the stage of requesting for more information with more questions like the Army Corps has.
And by the way, this isn't just this development, when we, when we take care of this levee and make it, you know, have it approved by the Corps, we've had this discussion probably 10 years ago, because we started doing design calculations and analysis based on certain loadings. And if you look at the last 10 years, we've had various, and there are different Corps people that have come in to, you know, play at different times. They've all said, I probably heard it at least five times, maybe 10, yeah, this is a Corps levee, and you'll have to do a design analysis to the top of levee. And if it doesn't quite work, then we'll have to discuss that and see if there's some kind of risk analysis. So it was definitely, we had no question that that's what their desire is. But ultimately, as, as Luke said, if we get feedback, we haven't not approved it yet. We just have to see what kind of information is provided that says it's going to be okay.
My other question, I know that there has been some other developments along the levee, Whiskey City, the Event Center. Who reimbursed for those architecture reviews? Was it the city, or was it the developer, was there no reimbursement? How did that work, does anyone have any idea, or...
Yeah, I do, we worked on both of those, the Event Center and Whiskey, and they were, they were reimbursed by the engineering firm. So that...
Other engineering firm?
Yes. Yeah, so that, I mean, that's the way both of those came down. And, and, in, in the, in the Event Center, we, we were requested to do the analysis, kind of by the engineering firm, but requested by the Corps to do the analysis, because it was special analysis, we did it. We sent the invoices to, to the engineering firm, and on Whiskey, we did the same, we had, that was...
But you weren't employed by the LCD to do that, you were employed by the engineering firm to do that.
We, yeah, we were requested by the LCD to supr, provide support, but with the understanding that they would be reimbursing our, and, go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, John, too, we had to give our, at least for the Whiskey City, we gave our letter of recommendation. So it was a similar process in a, in a sense, but then we were reimbursed by the, by the engineer.
So, yeah, it's, we interacted with the engineer, we were reimbursed by the engineer, but we gave an approval letter to the LCD.
With the LEC, they also dug into the levee though, correct? Or there, there's like the basement of the LEC that's over there that penetrated the levee a little bit?
Just to clarify, the work we did in the Event Center wasn't this kind of full review of all the plans. It was for specifically answering the question, if you take out three relief wells, will that basement's drainage system be satisfactory to make up the difference?
Okay.
So we were, on that one, we were very specific. On the Whiskey, we, we did a much broader review.
Yeah, thank you, I'm new to council, so...
No problem, yeah, that's what we're here for. Anything else we can answer?
Thank you, John, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else?
I, I was just going to offer that the particular engineering regulation from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers that I believe we're referring to is 1110-2-1156.
Luke has that memorized, I think.
Yes, so, that, at least it was our understanding, that applies to significant modifications to the levee. It has never been pointed out directly to American Structure Point in our conversations with the Army Corps that that applied in this scenario to this levee.
Could you recite that again, sorry? Thank you.
Now, I've got one question for you guys, when will, when can they expect the answer to the eight questions that they have left?
Well, we have to want to pay them, we froze, we froze funding, so...
I think they've already got the answer.
Okay, I want to debunk a couple of misconceptions that have been said. We did not change the design just to change the design at the top of the levee. We were working with you to change how the gangways were connected to meet the design criterias that you guys were putting out in your comment reviews. They were not just changes. We were working with you to meet the design criteria based on the information that we know of this levee. Now, we know that the pile, we don't know that the piles that were installed in 1996, which by the way, is not built and not designed for the top of levee. It is designed for the 100-year, and that's very clear on the plans. But in that, we do not know that the piles are there. So therefore, when we do the top of levee flood analysis with the discharge and the current speeds that you gave us, it is too much for the foundation without the piles. And we came up with this breakaway gangway connection so that we did not put undue stress on the levee. So these were not errors or omissions, we were working with you based on changing design criteria. We have never seen or heard directly from the Army Corps that this is the design criteria, and we've asked for it multiple times. Now, the Army Corps also told us to do this in stages, 30%, 60%, 90%. We have, we don't ever expect to, and I have never, until this time in my career, signed and sealed 100% drawings to give to a permit agency for review. I send 30% signed and sealed permit level drawings, which at 30% are concept level. Typically, for a, a project that's not this complex, totally fine, and it was totally fine for the 404. We would have had a 404, which is the waterfront, only piece of the Army Corps permitting if we weren't connected to the levee. So that permit is ready, sitting, waiting for the 408. So, I just want to make it very clear that we have worked with you, and we have answered every question, and we did not choose to go a different route. We did not choose to change the design at all. And I, and I just want to make that clear, that they were not errors or omissions, or a choosing of one way or another. a choosing of one way or another. We were working with you guys, because I took the same oath that you did to protect the environment and the people, as the engineer of record for the waterside portion of this project.
John, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe you already mentioned this, and I apologize, but, so the Army Corps did tell you specifically, or in writing, that we are, this is a significant change, so it needed to be designed to the top of the levee? Did they tell you that?
Verbally, yeah. We, we... Go ahead. Yeah. We were...
And you may have already said that, but I'm sorry.
No, that's a good, good question, yeah. I do have email documentation that for the 408, they consider the top-of-levee loading. Yes.
So why would you have never sent that to me? I've asked for it multiple times.
I, have you asked for that? I believe...
Yes.
So, I can send it to you.
We can look through the emails for sure. I think we've responded to all the questions.
Yeah, I haven't seen that, but it was, I asked, I asked in September, too, hey, it looks like this isn't, parts of this aren't to the top-of-levee loading, and I had verbal confirmation that, yes, it was. So in that response letter, I said, hey, there was verbal confirmation that it was. Can you please confirm in writing? And that's when in November, it was clarified that it wasn't. And we didn't, in the, anyways, and thanks for, she brought up some clarifying points, and I hope I didn't, there was, I want to clarify a misunderstanding of a misunderstanding. We weren't saying, the, when I mentioned the words errors and omissions, I was talking about the straightforward, some of those comments. The gangway that's, comments is another thing, and there's been a timeline there and the understanding of how it was designed and what it needs to be designed for. And it was in the 408 submittal, and the narrative recognizing that they had to design for that three-foot depth of excavation, or limit of three feet excavating on the levee. It was in that narrative. And our comments on the footings, we were saying, hey, what is this designed for? All it had was like a three-foot floating pedestal. So we were like, how is it going to connect to the existing levee? And then we also had the questions of designing to the top of levee, because there were other pieces that were also not designed to the 100-year. So, we had like separate questions, asking about, how is this going to connect? Because it was just a floating, like what's, is it going to connect on the existing footer? We had those clarifying questions. Yeah, but just to clarify, and that's why I stood up, we weren't saying all of your, there were errors, omissions, everything. There were just, as examples of things that were just forgotten, you know? When someone, oh, I forgot to put riprap around. Okay, put riprap around. That's an error. That's a, that's a thing that was missing, that if you went out and built it, and someone would look at that plan and say, there's no riprap. I think I'll not put riprap, and it doesn't get put on. So, you know, that's why, that's why these things are sometimes a little detailed, so. I apologize. But they've been very responsive, I think, when they, when we've gone back and forth. It's just that, you know, there are one engineering firm, and there's another engineering firm that we had to make sure things were consistent, and a lot of things that meshed together on the wet side and dry side of the levee, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody? Thank you, everybody, for coming. I appreciate the comments and, yeah.
Can I make just one clarification?
Oh, yeah.
So, if the city council wants us to move forward with maybe removing the new gangway, how do you, the existing one's going to stay. I guess I want to make sure we're all thinking through that. And so that still has to meet this top-of-levee standard all the way down there, if we change the connection just to make it more, to actually do what we want it to do? I guess that's...
That's a good, good question.
I want to make sure, I kind of want to clarify that while we're all here.
Yeah, that's a good question, and you can, your thoughts, too, but, so that gangway is an existing design in 1996. We were, obviously weren't part of that review, so we would touch base with Army Corps on that. We've been looking at these new gangway situations.
Right.
So, we would touch base on that with the Army Corps, and then start to look at that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to, I want to make sure, I kind of want to, as long as we're all here, I think, one of the things that we, when we first started talking to the Corps and the LCD about this project in '21, we had a lot of virtual meetings. I don't think you were involved yet. It was Forrest, maybe? And the whole reason we came up with, at the Corps' suggestion, submitting things at intervals, was to catch these big-ticket items before we got too far in the design process. And we were, I guess we were thinking, since this never came up before, until September, that, you know, we didn't realize that was the design height required. So that, that's a lot of what happened. That never got brought up until that, at least in our minds. And so when, when I was at the LCD, I think in September, I mentioned that we were designing to withstand floods, but that was in our mind, the 100-year.
Yeah.
So that, that just didn't get brought up until then.
I think, too, like, there's two pieces, and so all of the, the dry side, which is the majority was on the levee, but there are other pieces on the levee. All of that is being built on top of the levee.
Right.
So, it wasn't, just by nature of its design, it's on top of the levee. So, there was, there's, it's a complicated project, there's lots of moving pieces.
100%.
So, you know, it's, and just a piece of the waterside is on this levee that has to think about this. And so I think, yeah, if, it would be worthwhile, I would suggest to have a meeting with the Corps, because they were the ones who were involved in those 96 plans.
Oh, yeah.
To talk about, you know, this, this potential new solution.
This new option, solution.
Yeah, and talk about that.
So, Matt, do you have the plans for the 96 installation, where they went down 30, 40 foot? Do you have those?
Yeah, we have some of them.
We have some of it.
Okay. It's whatever we have to dig up from archives and, nobody seems to have the full set of plans.
Yeah, I don't know, does the Corps even?
I've shared that. Those are the ones I've shared with Mundell.
Okay.
But with that...
Go ahead, Nancy.
But, like I said before, when we were reviewing those plans, the piles are marked out and, and written NIC, which is not typically in construction, and don't, correct me if I'm wrong, Maxwell, it's typically not in contract. So, we don't know if the piles were ever installed or not.
Yeah, and I...
And, and not being able to excavate more than three feet, we can't even go out there and see if they are. Because if they are, that, that alleviates a huge problem that we have with the overturning, because if we have those piles, then we can withstand the 1,000-plus-year flood for the top-of-levee condition. But right now, we can't rely on that. I won't put my, I won't put my stamp on that, because I don't know. I haven't seen it, and I haven't talked to anybody that was here in 1996 that saw them installed.
Got you.
Yep. Thank you.
One last thing, Kelly, before we dismiss. So how do you want us to proceed? Are you guys going to get back to us on what, if you're going to remove the gangplank? What's our...
We got to have some discussion internally, and then they have to decide. I think they're going to want to look at some financing options and see if it's a doable project or not.
Okay.
If they just, you know, and I say they, council decides that they don't want to go forward, then the project will die. Then from there, I think, Jim, I think then that they would, there would be some contact.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair, yes.
Kelly, would you be opposed to having a public meeting for this project?
For what?
An actual advertised public meeting in the evening for the Riverfront Development?
We've had them. We had them with the beginning of it.
Yeah.
Have another one if that makes everybody happy.
Do you have the cost yet?
We've got some estimates, with a lot left out, yeah.
Want to entertain, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we got an estimate.